We don't, it's true.
My neighbor sent a message. More to that day there.
Okay, it is seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. Let's call the Johnson City Council meeting number 25-11 to order. Cindy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cope?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Burkhart?
Here.
I want to welcome everyone that is in the audience this evening. If you are here for an item on the agenda, we would ask for you to wait for that item to come up and address the council at that time. If you are here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under public communications to address the council. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And what we'd like to do is invite young people that are in our audience to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I do see some out there. Anyone under 21 is a young person. Or you can, there you go.
You want to come up here?
Pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the agenda approval. Mike, do we have any changes to the agenda?
None this evening, Mayor.
Okay, council, any changes? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to public communications. We have one scheduled public communication this evening, and that is a proclamation for National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And I do have a proclamation here, and I'll invite everyone up that is here for that proclamation to the front of the room. That is the entire audience?
Okay, well, I think this is, what? We've done this several years ago now. Yeah, I have track of plans, but I always look for few orange clothes. Because it's not my, or in my, oh, in my closet. But it's not one of my better colored. And just to throw this story real quick, the weekend, the show in my walk-in closet fell down. Oh, yeah, the day of the. Anyway, we're here for a very serious matter. And I know the council supports the cause. Why, you know, why we're reading this proclamation today and why it's important to identify June 6th? June 6th, because National Gun Violence Awareness Day. So I will, I will read the proclamation and then I will invite the city council members to come down. And if anyone wants to make any remarks on the proclamation, you can just signal and more than happy to let you share what you have to share with the council. So this again is a proclamation for National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas in 2023, 46,728 Americans lost their lives to gun-related injuries, averaging approximately 128 deaths per day. This figure includes suicides, homicides, accidental shootings, and other firearm-related incidents. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, 367 items died in gun-related injuries in 2023, translating to a rate of 11.2 deaths for 100,000 residents. While I will rank among the 10 states with the lowest gun death rates, every loss of life to gun violence is a tragedy. Whereas, while gun-related suicides account for the majority of adult firearm deaths, homicide is the leading cause of gun-related deaths among children and teenagers. In 2023, an estimated 2,571 children and teens under the age of 18 die from gun violence in the United States. With the vast majority, they become a homicide. And whereas, local officials and law enforcement, in partnership with local violence intervention activists and resources, know their communities best and are most familiar with local criminal activities and how to address them on our best position to argue for, how to keep their residents safe. And whereas, gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the number of firearm homicides, suicides, nonviolent shootings, culture domestic violence hotline, and school shootings increase across our country. And whereas, Johnson Electric officials and the Johnson Police Department are committed to reducing gun violence, encouraging exceptional gun violence behaviors, and keeping firearms out of the hands of dangerous people in order to keep our community safe. And whereas, June is recognized as National Gun Violence Awareness Month, and worn a color that symbolizes the value of human life will be worn by Americans across our country during the first weekend in June to bring awareness of gun violence and to honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And in order for Iowa to narrow the American city to Johnson Island and on behalf of the Johnson City Council, declare June 6th, 2025, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day and call upon all residents who are warned on June 6th to support our local electric officials, law enforcement, schools, businesses, and other organizations in efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence through the honor and value of all community health. Our sign of proclamation will be ten minutes, who? The liquor.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So does anybody want to add to what is already said? Does anybody want to describe what this room is that we have here?
Yeah, I can take it, I mean, it's flattering, but I can think of five. Sure. I mean, we know a lot of, a lot of us are parents or have been parents of kiddos in the school district or in the Johnson. And you see something that has such a high rate of injury and preventable death for our kiddos. It seems like the very first thing that being as a parent needs to be concerned about. And so when we see that gun violence is now the number one of the killers in America, it seems like the very least we can do, you know, to approach all of you and to thank you for paying attention to that and thank our law enforcement and our elected officials for helping to keep our community safe, but also for just getting the word out. Gun violence is so preventable. Well, county offers free trigger locks and lots of secure storage solutions. It doesn't have to be a federal. And there's lots of ways that we can keep our kiddos safe. So we're just, we're grateful for the opportunity to put up some money there. Anybody else add? I'm a volunteer. And our focus is on gun safety. We have a program called, you know, the BIDs, and then our gun safety laws and safety about safe storage. If anyone is interested in any part?
Well, I know that our police works with Pope County on the trigger lock over. And, you know, one of the other thoughts that I had to speak against is that unfortunately, we have experienced tragedy of teen suicide in in our community more than once. And so this is, this is a real, this is where we. And that's one that we need to talk about. Anyway, I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Thank you for the opportunity to read the proclamation. Does anybody else want to add anything?
Can I just grab a quick photo?
Absolutely. And we're going to, we're going to, we're going to have to run channel a little bit here. And I want to invite the council. Really happy to be here. Just make sure that whoever has the camera, you can see them.
Together, it's a table.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for making the conversation.
Thank you so much.
Nice job.
Yeah, you did really great.
Okay, we are still under public communications. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Cindy, do we have anybody online? Okay. We'll move on to public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening, and that is to conduct a public hearing on the matter of adoption of plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Northwest 54th Street Road Diet, and to consider resolution number 25-148, adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost. Consider the construction bids. Consider resolution number 25-149, making award of construction contract, and consider resolution number 25-151, approving construction contract and bond. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:12.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. On May 20th, the city received bids for the Northwest 54th Avenue Road Diet improvements. We did receive three bids for the project. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was $278,100. The low bid received was $225,468, approximately 19% underneath the engineer's estimate. The certified bid tab does show TK Concrete was the low bidder. Staff and the engineer recommend approval of the project. One thing, staff has spoken with not only Green Meadows West HOA as well as Little League and softball, as this will have an impact to the traffic there at Lou Clarkson. We'll have access at all times, but there will be delays. So we have spoken with them and notified them of the project as well and met with them. But we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. One last thing, that TK Concrete is currently doing the Green Meadows West sidewalk project, so they are in the area as well.
Does anyone have any questions for Matt? When will this start, Matt?
This will start, we're hoping to get a pre-construction meeting scheduled either yet this week or early next week, and then see what their schedule is to get them moving. We need to get the roadway done prior to school starting, so it's got a really compact schedule to get in before the end of August.
But it's a realistic timeframe?
Yeah, it's, it's a smaller project with the overlay and, and some concrete removal.
Well, TNK is in Green Meadows West right now, and I have lots of opportunity to observe their, their work performance, and they're doing a great job. So I, I'm confident that they'll be able to get the job done and do it well, so. Any other questions or comments for Matt? Is there anyone else? And this is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing then at 7:14. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 25-148?
I move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 25-149?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. And do we have a motion to approve resolution number 25-151?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to item number five, consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We approve them.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number seven, 7A, first consideration of ordinance number 1139, amending section 15.04 and section 17.06 for the purpose of amending mayor and council compensation as of January 1st, 2026.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. As you're all aware, there's been a number of discussions over the last several months about mayor and council compensation. The current compensation for the mayor is $3,600 per year, and that's unchanged since 1988. Council members receive $1,200 per year, and that too has been unchanged since 2021. Council had discussions during the December 2nd, 2024 work session prior to our 2026 budget process. At that time, the majority of the council was in favor of loosening compensation, starting with the FY '26 budget. For awareness, Iowa code dictates that mayor and council compensation can only be changed after a city general election, which will occur this November. So January 1st of 2026 would be the first time a change could be made at this point. At that work session, the council proposed and requested staff to include in the budget mayor compensation of $10,000 and council member compensation of $5,000. And so that's what was prepared in the 2026 budget. For impacts, the FY '25 budget allocates $9,600 towards mayor and council compensation. Since this increase would take effect on January 1st, it's a mid-year change for the fiscal year 2026 budget. So the costs will be phased in over two years. So the FY '26 budget, which has been approved by the city council, includes $22,300 to cover the half-year increase, and then a 27 budget would need to include $35,000 for the full increase. There was discussion around the cost of living adjustment that some cities have included. Direction and consensus was to exclude that. So that is how the ordinance was prepared. With that, there is a number of material, there's, there's a number of items in the council packet, including history and some comparisons to other metro communities in the packet. With that, I'd be happy to answer any question council has this evening. Thank you.
Council, any questions? Mayor, I have one. Mike, I can't remember, but I feel like we also discussed if a council member were to not show up for work. Do you recall how we were going to handle that? Or if we were going to address that at a different time?
I don't remember the specifics of that. I, I guess I would refer to city attorney if she has some thoughts about how we'd handle if there's a vacancy or extended absence.
Vacancy or, or just the not, you know, not attending council meetings, not attending other meetings. I just, I felt like we talked about it, but I, we, we did not come to any kind of consensus. But I'm wondering if it's something we should address at a future time or thoughts?
I am aware that there are some communities who have in their council compensation ordinance a provision that basically says if you fail to attend the council meetings for the month, you forego your pay for that month. I have seen those types of ordinances. You can't really say that they automatically lose their seat or anything like that, but you could, you could put something like that within the compensation ordinance if you felt like that would be helpful.
Well, I guess I'm drawing, I'm drawing, drawing these thoughts from what happened at the city of Des Moines a few years ago when they had a council member that did not show up for meetings. And then, and I, I do think if you're going to draw salary, some sort of attendance perhaps should be addressed.
I guess, you know, this is an ordinance, so it requires three readings. And if you wanted to come up with some language to consider a future reading, that could be something worth considering. It's hard to kind of do on the fly.
Oh, absolutely, I totally get that. But I'd be interested if the other council members thought that the, this was a valid, I mean, if it were something like, I kind of like the one that if you don't show up for a meeting, maybe, maybe one, two in a row or four in a row, I kind of like that one. I'd like to, I'd like to get some sort of input.
And I would say that if somebody missed four council meetings in a row, that'd be unprecedented in my almost 15 years. I mean, so I think.
For our group, I don't, I don't think it's necessary, but I also feel like there might be some questions based on the fact of what happened in Des Moines.
Yeah, if you had some language you wanted to suggest for the, maybe in the future or something that, you know, whether it's part of.
We can always amend an ordinance at some point in the future.
Sure, exactly, just like this is amending an existing ordinance.
Right. Well, if you wouldn't mind giving some, giving, I would be happy to take any kind of information you might have about those ordinances that have some linked salary to attendance for council. And I'm sorry I'm bringing this up at the last minute. As councilmember Cope said, I'm not, you know, I've, I've served on the council and as mayor for a number of years now, and I've, I've never known us to have a problem in that regard, but certainly that's something that could be considered. It's not until you have a problem that you need, then you need to address it. And, and that's exactly what happened in, in Des Moines, as I understood it.
And, and the Des Moines situation is a little bit different too in the sense that, I mean, their pay is almost $30,000. They receive benefits, so it's a little bit kind of an apples. I mean, because even, even while this is certainly a pay raise, it, it is not in any way making it a.
A life, you know, funding a.
Sure, an extravagant lifestyle.
Right.
Mike, just, when you were reading your explanation, I thought I heard you say that there hasn't been a change in the council pay since 2021. I think you meant 2001.
I'm sorry, you're correct, 2001, thank you for that. I, I would add, there is a provision in the mayor pro temp language. If there would be an extended absence of the mayor, the council can make a determination to provide a, up to the mayor level of compensation to the mayor pro temp. That doesn't address how that affects the mayor's pay.
I think that the prolonged absence of the mayor might be even less likely to occur than a prolonged absence. I mean, I, I think, I think we're starting to kind of anticipate scenarios that are.
It would be a catastrophic event.
It would be.
All right, sorry for bringing that up, but I just wanted to point that out.
I would serve as an alternate for the mayor on a committee, and it was like being the May Tagged Paranormal. I was never called upon. The mayor never missed a meeting, so. I quickly looked for my opportunity to take an off-ramp and find a better way to use my time.
Any other questions for Mike?
I, I don't have a question. Do I get to address this now?
Sure, sure. Let's, let's have a motion first.
Okay, that's our motion, then I'll address.
Do we have a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number 1139?
Still moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion?
Yes, I think I made this pretty clear in the last meeting that we had in December as well. I'm going to reiterate the same thing I said in last December's for everybody's consumption here. That December meeting was just a small set of people. So I came into the council not expecting any pay. I was not expecting any pay, anything at all. I was just came, I came to serve the city. The city has paid me, has welcomed me, as an immigrant, has welcomed me quite a bit, and I'd like to repay that. That's why I came into city council. I was not expecting any pay. In fact, when I got elected, a city staff member said, I don't want your social security number. And I said, why? You're getting paid. Oh, I didn't knew I was getting paid. That's the first time I knew I was getting paid. Regardless of that matter, as I was saying, I came here to serve the city. Pay was not the factor I joined the city council. And regardless of that, and, and recently, we had several things that happened that the city hasn't got enough funds to fund a lot of other things. We could have funded that. I know we have an extension happening in Northwest Territories, and we don't have enough funds to fund the police and the fire things. So we had a lot of things to do that. But having this compensation come in during this point in time does not make any sense to me. We should have done it quite a bit earlier or maybe waited for a little bit longer when we have enough funds to make sure everything is in place. But this is not the right time to do it. But I'm also asking all of you, the council members here, this is not the right time to raise compensation for us. I'm asking you to vote no on this. But this is not the way we should be going about it. As I said, I did not come here, we all came here to serve. We did not come for the compensation. I think we are doing a great job of serving the city, not for the compensation, just to serve, to make sure city progress as well, not for the compensation. So having said that, I'd like to ask all my city council members to say no to this move. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Whenever it's appropriate. And I, I respect your, your opinion on this, councilman Ready. And I think this is one of those issues where it's a kind of a, kind of a opinion, a principle kind of thing. And I, I think, you know, I'm going to vote yes today, and I, I believe this is the right move. And I believe really, any, every time, we would have, could have potentially considered this change, anytime between now and the last time it was changed, over 24 years ago. There was something that I'm sure the city could have used, the $12,000 or $25,000, this impact will have on the budget for something else, right? So I think that's going to be true, whether that's this year or any other year. And I think it is, I think it's, we don't do our city a good service when we go this long a period without considering the proper compensation of elected officials. That's not certainly how we handle every other position inside the city. We review constant compensation constantly, and we're doing upgrading salaries on a yearly basis for every other person who doesn't work on behalf of the city. And I view that this is part of that as well. You know, we, we all not only serve and work really, really hard here at the council and serving, coming to council meetings, but also serve various committees inside the city, but also spend a lot of time working very diligently, ensuring that regional entities, whether it's DART or MPO or MPA or Metro West Waste Authority, serving to ensure that those organizations as well are managed appropriately. So those are additional duties, I think, that we, that we take on. And I think if you look at the survey that indicates where the compensation is for most other similar-sized cities in the state of Iowa, it's the 5,000 increase that we're talking about taking this to puts us kind of in that ballpark. Certainly doesn't put us at the high end, and in fact, puts us lower than Ankeny, lower than Urbandale, lower than several other suburban communities here in the metro. So to me, I think this is the right time to do this. I think we've waited way too long to do it, and I think it's something we should have looked at a lot sooner. So I'm, I'm going to be proud to support this tonight, but I certainly understand that people have different perspectives.
Is there any other discussion? I, Mayor, yes, I have just one other comment. And you've heard me say this before, when we talked about this previously. I believe that there are people that could serve on the city council, good members of our community who could bring their own special skills and knowledge to the council. But they have restrictions, lots of times economically, whether it's childcare, or they have a business that they have to run, or they are involved in employment that doesn't give them the time off. in employment that doesn't give them the time off. And there, and plus the fact that the compensation is so low, they don't choose to run for the council. And I think that that's unfortunate, that, that it does sort of separate the council from basically the rest of the Johnston residences, who, like all of us, have bills to pay. And I believe that we're lacking that perspective, and the, again, the knowledge that could be brought here by people that are not serving and not choosing to run, because they just can't give up that extra time without any kind of compensation. So that's why I'm voting for this.
Is there any other discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to weigh in as well. I, I will also be supporting this ordinance change largely because, to some extent, Councilman Reddy, I, I agree with you. I, I think this should have happened long before. And since my time on the council, I feel like I was one of the folks who was reluctant at best, in other words, slow rolling any kind of change from happening. Because I, I did question, what was the right time, and what was the right compensation, if any, in this type of capacity. I, I fully agree with you, and I honor your opinion with regard to how and why we all come to our decisions to serve. And I hope that other folks in the future continue to do so. And so my vote is, is just as much, if not more, for the future of the city, so that we don't have to wait 24 to 25 years each time for a compensation decision, that we can continue to make sure that we're, quote, competitive in that regard. And the last comment I guess I'd make is, I certainly would not be supportive of this if we didn't have the diligence of our leadership and staff making some other tough decisions, but certainly practical decisions to keep our levy rate the same as it was this last year, and certainly making sure that we did and were able to prioritize the funding of higher priority needs within the city. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Well, I'll just make one quick comment. We'll have a couple of other opportunities to talk about this as, as the ordinance makes its way through the process. But consistent with the position that I've taken previously, if I, I don't have a vote, but if I did have a vote, I would be voting against it as well. I don't support what we're proposing to do here. And I, I would, I would be voting against it if I, if I did have a vote. So I want the, the note, or the minutes to reflect that. So. We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7B, consider resolution number 25-147, directing sale of $12,970,000 subject to adjustment per terms of, I've written over my word there, offering general obligation bond series 2025. Sarah.
Mayor and council, today we received bids on our general obligation bond sale at 10:00 AM. And we have Matt Stuffel from PFM in the audience here to talk on those bids further. There is a bid tabulation at your, your stations tonight for your review.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Like Sarah said, I'm Matt Stuffel with PFM Financial Advisors. We're the municipal advisor for the city. And we received very favorable bids today on the city's $12,970,000 of general obligation bonds. The low bid was from TD Securities at 4.0670. The cover bid was by RW Baird at 4.088, which is less than a basis point, or about one basis point, I guess. So the nine bids, the, the spread between the high bid and the low bid was about 22 basis points. So very competitive market. You know, this, the last two months in the municipal market have been very difficult. April, we saw very few bids, some cities receiving not so favorable bids. May, things started to stable, stabilize a little bit, kind of after the tariff talk slowed down a little bit. And then, so May, we, we saw some, some good bids. But we were certainly kind of on the edge of our seats day to day, week to week, as the municipal market was going through a, a pretty big roller coaster. So, you know, the interest rate here is about 1.08% lower than we had built into the plan of finance for the budget. So that will reduce the cost to the city of about $1.4 million in interest costs over the, over the life of these bonds. So happy to answer any questions. As part of this bond sale, the city did go out for a rating from, from S&amp;P Global. I'm sure you've all saw that, that the, that the city had their, their rating reaffirmed. Lots of very good information in those rating reports. So I would encourage you to read them in detail. It's a, you know, it's a third party look at the, the fiscal health of the city. And there was lots of really good things to say. So, you know, continue to keep up the good work to Mike and Sarah and the staff in the city. So happy to stop, pause here and answer any questions before I make a formal recommendation.
Council, have any questions?
Mayor, I do. Just, just briefly, some explanation, if you would. The caption or the headline of our agenda item is the 1297. I even see a footnote, I guess, or a asterisk here that talks about the par amount being 1245 with a purchase price of 1282. Where, where do the numbers come from?
Yeah. So to, so to, we're funding the city's CIP for fiscal '26. And so we need $12,724,160 deposited into the city's funds to pay for all the CIP projects. So when we structure these bonds, we structure them on par, and we don't anticipate the, try to anticipate the premium. And so the bid that was received was bid with a premium, where they, you know, higher coupons on, in the first 10 to 12 years, and then lower coupons in the out years. So that generates about 400, 468,963. So in prior years, when interest rates have been really low, we've just kept the premium and decreased the amount of money we're going to borrow next year. But as we've moved into a, a higher interest rate environment, we don't need that money today. There's no sense in paying the higher interest cost on it today. So we actually reduced the amount of bonds that we're going to borrow. So instead of borrowing the, the $12,970, we're going to borrow $12,455. In, in, in the bond sale, we set that up so that the city has that flexibility to decide that today. So we worked with Sarah and her staff to say, you know, is there any reason you need to keep the premium? If not, then we'll release it, and we'll, you know, you reduce the amount of money that you're borrowing, and still get the same amount of proceeds. So it's a really good question.
Thank you for that explanation.
Any other questions?
Okay, then it would be PFM's recommendation to award $12,970,000, as adjusted, general obligation bond series 2025A to TD Securities out of New York, New York.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution 25-147 stating what Matt has just said?
Still moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
For Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7C, consider approval of resolution number 22-150, approving the site plan for 5565 Merle Hay Road.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council, Michael Dell, planning staff. My first presentation here, excited to be here. So I think this is painless as possible for everyone.
We won't on you.
The Architects Partnership, LTD, and Chase Bank are submitting a site plan here for a proposed 3,334 square foot financial institution located here in the hash marks. They will have frontage on Merle Hay Road and Pioneer Parkway. The subject parcel is 5565 Merle Hay Road. It's approximately 39,099 square feet, or 0.89 acres. The subject parcel is zoned, PUD, Beaver Farms Plaza PUD. This PUD allows for the C1, C2, and C3 districts. And it would allow for the proposed use for financial institution. Wrong sheets. One sec. Here is a general concept from their site plan on their proposed layout. The building will be here in the middle. It'll be meeting all of our bulk standards from the code requirements. They do have a one-way drive-through entrance here on the western side oriented towards Merle Hay Road. This is where they'll have an ATM and a drop-off location. Their primary entrance is going to be on the eastern side. They will be providing parking here on the east and south sides also. In terms of parking requirements from a code standpoint, they're required to provide 13 spaces, one per 275 square feet, also with two ADA spaces. They have provided 21 spaces, including, along with an EV ready, EV-ready parking spots, and two bicycle parking spaces for their proposed landscaping. Because of the existing soil quality on site, and for the proposed maneuvering of that drive aisle that they have on the western side of the building, they are proposing to remove three existing trees here in the red, and 21 shrubs. They are proposing to replace these mature growth trees. They have a Skyline Honey Locust proposed, one autumn treasure hop hornbeam, actually, two honey locusts proposed, and one autumn treasure hop hornbeam. The existing trees that are shown in black here, those will be preserved. This tree that's aligned down here will be preserved also. They will make sure that all the critical root systems, at least 60%, are fenced off also. And this is just in existing conditions on site. For their proposed landscaping plan, they have a requirement to have 25% of their total space be open space. They are proposing 41.6% space for open space, so going above that design standard. With the street tree requirement, open space tree requirement, and interior parking landscaping requirement for trees, they are required to have 19 trees total, also 10 shrubs in there. These are two-inch caliber trees. They are proposing 19 trees, and they are going above the 10 shrub requirement, and proposing 74 shrubs. So they're meeting most of our requirements on the landscaping side. They are preserving over 20 trees on site. Everything that they're taking out for the maneuvering spaces and just the overall maneuvering on site will be put back into place. For the proposed elevation sheets here, we have the north elevation and the west elevation. On the western side, they are proposing 84.43 Class A materials. These are brick, cast stone, and glass. They have 15.57 Class B materials, ACM panels, these are aluminum panels, along with fiber cement. Here on the north side, that's just right where my cursor's at, they are proposing 77.88% Class A materials, that brick, cast stone, and glass combination again, and 22.12% of Class B materials, so that ACM and fiber cement. Moving on here to their other elevation sheets, the south end, this is where they have an employee entrance, just a secondary entrance here. But they are proposing 91.4% of Class A materials, that cast stone, and 8.6% Class B materials, some fiber cement boards. East side here, this is their primary entrance. They're proposing 82.6% Class A materials, cast stone, brick and glass, 17.4 Class B materials, that ACM and fiber cement board. All of these proposed amounts of materials and facade elements are above our 50% requirement for materials on facades. We did not receive any public comments for the proposed project. Everything will meet our code requirements in terms of sewer and water hookups. Going back to my aerial, they will have access here to the north and an existing entrance on Pioneer Parkway, and they all have an existing entrance here on Merle Hay.
Questions? Does anyone have any questions?
I do have some questions. I thank you for the landscape plan, and I noticed there's several native plants on your plant list. The issue I have is that, I looked at the Google Maps, and I did the street view, and we're losing three 30-foot, 35-foot tall maple trees. And you're going to put in three trees as replacements. And two of them are shade trees, the honey locust. But they're only two-inch caliper, or it says here, one and a half to two-inch caliper. So it's probably going to be about 12-foot tall at the most. And the other tree, the hop hornbeam, is an understory tree. So it's never going to be a big tree. And so what I would ask would be that we think more about the canopy that we're losing, because a 30, 35-foot maple tree is going to have a canopy that probably is 20 feet diameter. And we're replacing it with something that has a four-foot diameter. So what I'm asking of you, or the owner, would be to consider putting six trees in instead of just three. I'm not going to make this a requirement of my vote, but this is our front door. Merle Hay Road is our, I feel like it's pretty much our most important road. I know that a lot of people like 86th and 70th and all the other things. But this is the one that leads directly from the interstate to City Hall. And I just think that we're doing a disservice to that whole look of the corridor without getting some more canopy back for what we're losing. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Mayor, I do. First, I, I want to echo Councilmember Martin's sentiments there. I, I am concerned and a little bit saddened that those well-established trees, and especially the consistency of those well-established trees, will now be broken to try to provide better view or potentially soil stabilization and access around that wraparound. The south side of that building is what I guess I have the most concern with, though. As you brought up the elevations, that's a little bit displeasing. Again, as you think and consider driving northbound on Merle Hay, especially when there is that entrance off of Merle Hay, that that's what would be seen. Does, do, do we, as council, have any grounds to be able to try to provide that? I realize that they're using a significant amount, I think you said 90-some percent Class A materials. But do, do we have anything that we can encourage them to make it look a little more visually aesthetic?
We can definitely go back to the applicant and suggest that if there's more possibility for openings, you know, more actual entrance space between the public realm and to the interior. I think that would be a good ask, just from a design perspective.
Okay. I, I would certainly welcome that conversation with the, the applicant.
My, my concern is very similar to Councilman Burkhart's, and that is, I mean, I'm concerned about the trees, too, because that's an incredible asset that we're losing along Merle Hay Road. And I think the suggestion to plant more trees there to replace it is a good one. But what I was, what I was focusing on was the west elevation, because that's the one that's going to be facing Merle Hay Road. And even though it's not as bland as the south elevation, it, it will be the backside of the building facing Merle Hay Road. And it kind of looks like the backside of a building. I appreciate that they put, you know, more effort into the front side of the building, because that's where people are going to enter. But that's not what most people are going to see. So I guess I would, you know, I would encourage you to have some more conversation with the builder, with the property owner, about, you know, making it a little bit more pleasant to look at as they're driving down Merle Hay Road.
Yeah, I mean, so as we, whenever somebody comes forward with something like this, we sort of probably think, okay, what is your, in which direction are you trying to kind of point the building towards? And I presume maybe part of the challenge here is that you can make an argument for any of the four sides to be the kind of primary side. Right? Because you've got the traffic heading up Pioneer Parkway, heading into this, kind of this commercial area. And so the east, the north side, the east side is facing the other commercial part. So that's probably part of the challenge is figuring out, you know, we typically don't require everybody to treat all sides as kind of the most welcoming side. And so figuring out which ones do and which ones aren't. So I think that's always probably part of the challenge. But I presume that was part of the staff conversations with the developer. I don't know, is the architect online or available for this conversation or not? Somebody is standing up in the back, but.
Yeah, the civil engineer.
Okay.
Certainly not an architect. Cody Weaver with Civil Engineering Consultants, 2486 Street. This is certainly, like I said, certainly not an architect. But they do try to work to break up those buildings as far as their looks. They chased. Just in order to try to get everything shoved as far east as we can, we're impacting as little as we could.
And I understand all of that. I just, you know, the side that people are going, as they're traveling north of Merle Hay Road, that's, you know, they're going to be closest to that building. And they will, you know, they will, they will see it the most. And as Councilmember Burkhart pointed out, the first thing they're going to see is the south elevation. And then they're going to see the west elevation. And, you know, as Councilwoman Martin said, I mean, this is the primary corridor in our row, in our community. That's where we have the most traffic. And that's what, where we really put most of our focus on making sure it looks nice. And so, you know, I just, I'm, what I'm suggesting is, let's see if we can't do something more. And I think others are saying it as well. Do something more to make this look like not the backside or the side of a building. Because that's what people are going to see. And it's always hard to tell from the elevations what exactly it's going to look like.
A good example of this would be the one very similar materials.
Okay. See what we can do.
Yeah, no, for sure.
Other questions or comments, council? If not, have we hazed Michael enough? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 22-150?
I move. Second.
Motion is second. Discussion?
Mayor, I just want to insert, this is, best I can recall, did not come up before in discussion with economic development. So I know that in past council members have kind of looked toward the ad hoc Economic Development Committee members as to what discussions may have been had or held in that capacity. But this type of site plan was never brought to our attention. That's all I'd like to add.
Okay, we, I think we had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
No.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans? Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7D, consider approval of claims in the amount of $17,265,311.05.
I move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. City council or city administrator comments? Mike?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I just wanted to highlight, and I know Matt from PFM brought it up, but we did have from S&amp;P a reaffirming of our AA+ rating, which is a huge thing. I really want to give thanks to staff, in particular Sarah, Dave, Rose, Josh. There's a big team that puts together information, meets with S&amp;P. So hats off to them and the work they do to get that rating reaffirmed. And as Matt noted, there is some good information in the rating call or the rating information that S&amp;P puts out. So I encourage council and the public to review it. Otherwise, I don't have any additional comments this evening. Thank you.
Staff, anything additionally?
We will not have another council meeting prior to our East of Merle Hay Northwest 63rd Public Meeting. You should have an invite on your calendar for that, but that is scheduled for June 10th, so next Tuesday, from 5:30 to 7:30 here at City Hall. And then one thing I wanted to bring to council's attention, we did receive a certificate of appreciation. We've passed a milestone with GovDeals, which is the website where we sell our used equipment. So I would like to thank Scott Cherry for leading that effort. But we also have Deputy Chief Burrow that does that, as well as Captain Stephen Norrie that participates in that as well, as well as other departments. I know that Parks has participated in that as well. But we've passed the milestone. We've sold over $1 million on GovDeals in the last 11 years. So that goes back into our capital, our capital equipment fund so that we can then use that to purchase other equipment. What we have found with GovDeals is that we get a better return versus just trading our equipment in. They seem to go for a higher price when we auction them off. So just wanted to bring that to the council's attention. Thank you.
Anything else from staff? Chief Clark, did you want to mention that we have a swearing-in this week?
Yes. Tomorrow night at 6:30 at Station 38 on 62nd Avenue, we will have a swearing-in ceremony combined with an award ceremony. So you should all have a calendar invite on your calendar for that. We've been kind of holding off for a couple of hires and promotions. And so we are going to do it before I leave. And so we should have a good event tomorrow. We've got a lot of words to hand out as well. So thank you.
And thanks to you guys for being out on the bridge on Saturday, for damn to damn. They're always there. They always make sure that we get safely across the bridge.
That's great. Yep, they were there. And then we also had some send-offs for the National Guard. We were able to fly the flag for the troops leaving, so.
And the police department was involved in that as well. And several staff members were out for the send-offs also. And for the command retreat earlier in the week. A lot of things happening this past.
Lots of events lately.
Couple of weeks. So anyway, thanks to your department as well as everyone for your involvement in all of that.
And we've also got the Family Fun Fest coming up on Saturday out here in the yard, so lots.
Great time, great time. I don't see Jeff here, but I was going to have Jeff mention, I don't know, who else was out at the designation of the water trails? There's several people out there, but nobody that's present here was there.
I was there, but I didn't do the float. The Iowa DNR designated officially Beaver Creek as a water trail, as a state water trail. And in order to meet that, there are certain criteria. It has to be mapped, signed, regularly maintained, access points, those types of things. So in addition to the eight-ish miles of Beaver Creek, they added some additional miles of the Des Moines River downstream of downtown, kind of by Yellow Banks Park. And so as part of that ribbon-cutting, guess we didn't cut a ribbon. But as part of that event, a group of folks, including the mayor, did a float from Lou Clarkson Park down to Birdland Marina.
Eight and a half miles. I counted every one. But it was a great day. It was a beautiful day to be floating down, floating down the river, so anyway. Okay, city council comments. Councilman Evans?
Nothing, thanks.
Thanks.
Councilman Coe?
Just a couple of things. We had a resident meeting with some folks on Country Ridge Lane, I think it was since our last council meeting, about a stormwater project that we're looking at. Just wanted to highlight the good work staff is doing to get buy-in from the neighbors up there, as well as our engineer, Bolton and Meek, I think is working us on the project. I thought a lot of good work in trying to listen and trying to build consensus. So just, which I think is always something we try to do. And so just wanted to highlight, I think, some really good staff work there. Second of all, noted in the consent agenda, kind of getting back online, our census, special census. And so appreciate the work of staff to diligently work, as well as work with our federal delegation to try to prevent, and what I think would have been kind of an unfortunate sort of, some communities in the metro had gotten that census done, others hadn't. So really want to highlight the work of our staff, but also our federal delegation for their work in getting that fixed. So just wanted to highlight those two things.
Councilmember Burkhart?
Nothing.
Councilwoman Martin?
I have nothing.
Did we want to mention that we had interviews for the fire chief?
Yes, we did have interviews. An offer was extended preliminary.